Thank you all and welcome. This is the workshop meeting of the Board of Education on Tuesday, October 9th. And we are meeting this evening at the Delaware Area Career Center. Their south campus on Oklahoma's Pike. We're being close to file Ms. Freeman. And we sure appreciate that she and her staff made accommodations for us this evening. And thank you very much for holding the meeting during the day. And to your food service group for preparing the food. And the young people, go ahead, speak shortly on the presentation. So I call the order, we're just going to call it.
Ms. Denver?
Here.
Mr. Name? Here. Ms. Bryant is absent, Ms. Feesel is absent, Mr. White?
Yes, here. And would you all please say in the order of the political leaders, the Black?
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without a doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With the agenda, I would like, especially for the benefit of the young people in the Career Center, to make some adjustments here, and also recognizing that Ms. Bryant and Ms. Feesel are likely, if the point, to make a motion to this change. To make the Career Center update tied to A, the reports of Powell's other connection, meaning B, the professional development update would be C, the first reading of private financial forecast would be D, E would be the first reading of board policy updates, and F, as any changes mean civil or high income contact. So is there a motion to make or changes, please?
Sure.
Second? Will you call the vote?
She can't hear.
Oh.
Ms. Denver?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes. She's okay. Oh, there, oh, sorry.
I'm just kidding.
Did you hear it, did you hear it first?
Can I add one?
Well, with that, let's get into item A. So let's turn it over, please.
Thank you, Mr. James. And I can thank you to Board of Education for holding the tour, we're excited to have you. And most of all, I want to share with you a little bit about the Delaware Area Career Center. What I want to do is I can thank you for moving us forward, so our students have some other obligations, but we want to get them on, and I'm looking to share with you what we can do next. So we'll remember. Okay. So don't talk about it. Okay. Well, again, thank you for having it here and for moving us first, so our students can get to where they need to go. And at this time, I'm going to introduce the students, have them come up, I am going to let them introduce themselves, and they have a presentation that they'd like to share with you. So at this time, with Marissa, and Dustin, and Jared would come forward.
Hello, everyone. Let me first thank you guys for coming to the Career Center. It's much appreciated just the meeting here, and then also what you guys do for my education and my field science education as well. I am Jared Buller, and let me draw a word up. I'm Jared Buller, and I'm in the law enforcement program. I'm a senior, and I currently attend Old Tangi Liberty High School. I moved back here from North Carolina last year, so last year was my first year at the school, and I think it's a great place. Their facility is awesome, the teachers are really good, and overall, I can tell that that's put a lot of work into it, and I thank you for that. I am in Civil Air Patrol apart from the Career Center, and there I am the commander of that promise combat squadron. And Civil Air Patrol is the Air Force auxiliary, so we do search and rescue, emergency services, that program, leadership, training, aerospace education, to fly, things like that, and that's the managing department of DACC. In DACC, as I mentioned, I'm a law enforcement. I love DACC, I'm glad. It's a great place, the environment is excellent, it's not like your home school, or that you really get to connect with the teachers more, because you're already there for two and a half hours every day. And then you also get to connect with students as well. And the students also become like family to you by the end of the first year, so. I think the benefits of DACC are amazing, and you know, I highly encourage my classmates, sophomores, and whatever, to attend DACC. Earlier today, I was part of a presentation to the sophomores at Liberty about our school, and I was well knew and all that stuff. And now, we're going to go through a few pictures. So first is, law enforcement program is quite military focused, so it's a semi-military organization. You obviously wear the uniform, you call it marching. This is a picture taken last year of my junior and senior class together. Currently in my class, we have 11 students, and here we're standing, I mentioned, preparing for inspection before we get out on field trip. And I believe that was to a forensics accounting field trip at the Bryant University. Ended up being an accounting presentation, and it was really interesting, that three hours up here and there wasn't quite what we expected. Accounting versus forensics, a little bit different. But in any case, it was really fun. This is our senior project presentation. All the students at DACC are required to do senior project, and I'm not sure what he's presenting about, what we present for, like, officials, whether it be from business departments or from the school, or whatever. And so, this year, I'm doing a mindset project on terrorism and its effects on law enforcement and society in general. And so, later this week, I'm going to have an interview with the chief of, for the former chief of police of wellness, and see what his perspectives on terrorism are and how they've changed in the past 11 years. This is September 1st. Alright, I'm sorry. September 11th. This is forensics, it's another part of our law enforcement program. Forensics is, it'll be interesting classes, a lot of hands-on stuff. Here, we're looking at a dead record of a body, and we're examining maggots, and flies, and all that stuff around, seeing how maggots develop and all that stuff. Smelled pretty bad, but it was some awesome kind of experience. And I'm actually the one that found that record on the side of the room somewhere in the classroom of the school, so it's interesting. This is crime scene examination type stuff, or investigation. This was last year at the beginning of the year, there was a big dead body, and obviously, and you had to figure out how she was killed. And ended up, she slipped on some water from the ice pack, and then they're now in the corner of the house. And then this is another part of our program. We get to meet a lot of officials, or a lot of employees from other departments in, you know, surrounding areas, and they just come to the school and talk to us about, you know, this is Officer Jacksons from CBD, and he talked to us about their explorers program, how to get to CBD, and all that kind of stuff. And then this is also another picture of inspection, at the beginning of last year as well. And I was the officer who looked last, so I got the opportunity to inspect it throughout such day, and drill the outside, and outside. And then, as I mentioned, we do a lot of drill. This is us taking the flag, beginning and ending each day, so beginning of the day to put it up, and then we take it down. And then traffic stops, another part of our program. We've been working on this this past week, and basically, our instructor will act as a suspicious person, or a team that will pull over, and we'll have to adapt to the situation and try to figure out how best to handle it. And then, another picture of us raising our, the red flag. And then finally, I believe, this is a radar gun, and we got the opportunity to, you know, play with it a little bit, see how fast people were going down 23. They all started slowing down, and saw a huge group of cops standing outside, I'm not really sure why. That was really interesting, it all slowed down, you could see that speed decrease and all that stuff, and someone just staring at you as they go by. And that said, I'll leave, which is Justin. Thank you for your time.
First of all, I'm sure everybody's heard the little kids say, "First is the worst, second is the best." I'm going to prove that wrong tonight. So, I'm Justin Beers, a student from Old Tangi regular, as I call it in high school. Studying in the Power Sports and Diesel Tech program at the Career Center, and I want to thank Old Tangi for allowing me to go to the Career Center, a great opportunity, and it's the best decision I've ever made in my life. So, first of all, how was I introduced to the Career Center? For 4H, I'm a member of 4H. There was a welding school, welding camp over the summer, 2008, when I was 10, and I enjoyed it pretty, so it kind of opened up my eyes to FFA, agriculture, Career Center programs. So last year, I decided to enroll in our Diesel Tech program. Okay. So, I don't know what you guys see, man. FFA president now, I'm pretty proud of that. I couldn't have done it in Old Tangi, but you know, FFA doesn't have Old Tangi. Okay, I'm a member of National Technical Honor Society, proud of that too, and a student ambassador, which is why I'm here, correct? Good. How do I work this thing? Nice, lovely pictures. Okay, this is my project at the Career Center right now. It's a 1953 drive here Model 60 that I restored a few years ago. Must not have done something right, because I'm having to work on that. So, it's having transmission problems. So I'm down in the transmission, doesn't look like I'm paying any attention, because I'm smiling. Another picture would be doing the same thing. Does everybody know anything about transmission, shifters, gears, and all that? That's what's in there. So, that's what I'm working on. That's last year's project. I restored a 1950 Ford 8N tractor, working on that there. Alright, and this is a picture of me, Vice President Thomas Presley, and Secretary of FFA, Michael Newman. This is a bunch of tools from Tractor Supply Company that was donated to the Career Center. So, we had that picture taken, and sent to Tractor Supply, put in a newsletter and all I have no idea why I'm standing next to an international tractor. There I am. Same picture from there, I'm going to explain there. Okay. Has anybody ever heard of driver tractor for school day? Yeah, that's part of FFA week, and I was the only one to participate in that, so there I am. Kind of embarrassing and exotic altogether. This is part of the award ceremony last year for FFA. Me and Caleb Simmons, we had not got seats, or something, I don't know their last names or anything. I don't know what they wore either. Okay, well, thanks for having me. I'll talk to Marissa.
Hi, I'm Marissa Smith. I go to Old Tangi, and I'm in fire service training. I decided to go to the Delaware Area Career Center, because I visited it, I think it was my freshman year, and we went and visited it, and I thought it was a great program, and I loved how it wasn't just sitting at the desk like you guys are right now. It was more like hands-on, and they seemed like they were like a team, which I've always been like a part of the team, like, with cheerleading and softball, and I just thought it was something I would really enjoy. And how I'm benefiting from this is, we're all getting like college credits, and I'm meeting some of the fire chiefs, and everything that actually hires a lot of us once we graduate. And my future goals is to become like a part-time firefighter, and go to school at Cincinnati or Comess State to be a paramedic, and then my dream is to get on Columbus Fire Department. And another experience I had was going to the Delaware Fair, and experiencing like little kids come up to me and say like that, and they're a hero, and they want to be just like me, and all these cute little things that you dream of like hearing, and I actually got to hear those. Another thing is, I actually got to be in the Delaware Gazette, they wanted to interview me, and I thought that was a great opportunity as well. And then, your sense of experience? That's us doing search and rescue in the tower. We actually had foam in our SDB masks, so we were actually blindfolded, going in different mazes, and towers, and upstairs, and through different obstacles that, when, in real-life situations, when there's like smoke and everything, you won't be able to see much, so you need to use your other senses to get your way, like in and out of buildings, and like finding victims to save. These is one of our Rescue 951, just one of the trust dollar donated to us. And that's us getting, doing gear drills, and just learning about like our SDB packs, and all of our turnout ears, and we have to put all this gear on in 90 seconds or less. And then that's us just continuing to do gear drills, because it's like really important every, if we get on fire trucks. And we also do EMT training, and this is us doing CPR, and using the AED. And we're all like, we always work as a team, like we never work individually, and our instructors always talk us through everything, and make us feel like there's nothing that we can't do, and especially if you do it as a team. And I was actually on a flyer for the fire program, and I'm just looking for mine. Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions for our students? So do you all come half-days, or how much time are you in Old Tangi, and how much time do they open?
I come, this is the half of the day, so I'm at Liberty for four classes, I go home for lunch for a little bit, and I come here. Last year, I went to, I came here first, and then went home for a little bit, and then I moved for three classes.
I also do half-day, but you can choose to do full-day at the Career Center classes, but I just go to Old Tangi in the morning, and then I come to the Career Center after.
I don't go to Old Tangi at all, I'm full day at Career Center.
And what do you want to do with your power sports, as a power sports piece with that?
Well, I'm not sure that I want to be mechanic, I'd rather use the ag part of the program, getting into ag teaching, the ag engineering, something like that.
I was talking to someone the other day, who's been in the district for a while, and they said, "I've been here long enough that I remember driver tractor of school day." And I laughed, I thought they were just kidding me, but they said, "No, it was, it was an actual, back in the day, it was a driver tractor, and apparently there still is." So, I'm excited to be able to go back and tell them I've actually seen it there.
What do we add in the agricultural department, for studies of farming?
Yeah, that's a lot of what we work on, and we add agricultural equipment, and to the heck of things.
I mean, what would you like to see added? What would it mean for the, for me? Remember the DACC?
We have various agricultural programs, and so to try to do a full fudge across the game, and that is so broad. So we also have environmental science, we have the zoo school, that's called at the zoo, we have the equine program, that's actually at Fairgrounds, we have the ag programs at Big Walnut and Buckeye Valley, so we have another, a number of other ag opportunities for students that would like to, to kind of focus in on a certain area of that, in a way.
I would be interested in asking the two that, that have today here, do you find having that freedom of being able to leave, go get lunch, come back to school, does that disrupt you, Dave? Is that, do you like that better than seeing in one place, every period, bells ring, you move? What's do you like that? You've been, you've been in both, right? Obviously.
I honestly like it better, because it kind of gives you like a leeway and a break to go from like sitting in a classroom all day, to actually going in and doing like hand-on learning and training. And you also get away from like the people at your school, and you also like meet the friends of the Career Center as well.
I agree with you. I really like going home for lunch, I get to sort of choose where I want to go. Maybe, I mean, it's a lot more freedom, in my opinion. I would come out of story school when I was in, you know, from first to sixth grade or something like that, so that's sort of what we focus on, with responsibility and stuff like that. So, for me, it's, yeah, I enjoyed it a lot, and I know, like, I'm good with the drive, so that's why I go home for lunch, but for students who don't drive, or who don't drive rather, they have to go, or eat lunch at school, and I'm, you know, it's head over here.
Do you ever have, is it a challenge, getting places, going late, in rush, or do you reserve some, you're living, the schedule being a small?
Right, it is a little bit tight this year. Last year, I had 45 minutes, and this year, I have a little bit less, so I have to eat lunch pretty quickly. And that's also Liberty, when their schedule is different from here, or different than normal, I, like, for home base today, I had to leave that class early, come here, and I was also late to go to school as well. So, the officers pretty accept me that, they say, "You were at school," so that's it.
So, I'm sorry, you know, it's much more about it. The programs only open to juniors and seniors, or can they start coming sooner, or?
There is a sophomore program available, and sort of just like a overall, general, like, career exploration type of?
There's a career graphic sophomore program, and oftentimes, it's for students that are at risk, and you want to kind of keep them in school, and we have great success with those kids, and they matriculate into our junior and senior programs, and they very well. But for the, for the most part, Career Center is our junior and senior programs. If you all could sell the Career Center to your peers, what would you, what would you say to them, to sell it to them?
I would honestly say that, like, it was the best decision of my life, and I think that they would, they would connect with me, because it's way better than sitting in a classroom, and I know we've all said that a million times, but it honestly is, because you guys were there, like, sitting in class, like, all day, like, 40 minutes, like, you literally don't pay attention, because your brain is fried, but, like, when you have hand-on training, and you work with like different people, and everything, like, in my program, they've all become like my brothers, so it's literally just being like, with your family. And it's honestly, I think it's way better than, I can't sit still for 45 minutes in a chair, like, for eight hours straight, and it's like a great opportunity, and plus it comes with like college credits, and like a, kind of other benefits as well.
Well, Old Tangi set you up for success, and Career Center is the next level up. It pushes you forward into the jobs that you're liking, and every way you want to go there.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing for me is, first of all, the friends that you make, like I said, but they're like two and a half hours a day, it happens. And then also, it's, it has changed from what you normally do for me today. It honestly is the part that I look forward to every day, you know, like, last year, when I had to get up and come here first, I would get up pretty quickly. And this year, while I love Liberty, it's not so much the same. And it's also earlier to get up to Liberty, you know, here, but DACC starts at eight o'clock, they accept me.
What are the differences in the course requirements from traditional high school?
It's honestly the same. They work with you, they make sure you have all of your credits to be graduated, wait before, like, you need proper guidance, counseling, support, and think about joining junior year, and they'll make sure you're on track to graduate, and you'll get all the classes you need done, either if you go full day up at Career Center, or if you just go half-day a day, make sure that you're going on track to graduate, you don't have to worry about anything.
Add to your point, thinking about 20 years ago, or 30 years ago, there was a difference in graduation requirements for students who went to vocational education and those who stayed back, and that is no longer the case. They have to meet the same academic math, science, English, social study requirements that any student at Old Tangi or any other district would need. And if Old Tangi has any particular kind of graduation requirements, or non-graduate requirements, they still need to meet those requirements too.
Which meant is, did you find those effective, or if you're doing math, reading, whatever might be?
I'm honestly not taking classes off the first, I just gone to Old Tangi for my academics and then.
I wouldn't be shocked if they have to.
But we do have academic classes here, and we have AP courses. We don't have AP, we have dual, dual enrollment. And in fact, in a few minutes, I was going to kind of give you a little more information about the world side of the, of students up here, but they need to be a little bit more. And they also have to make sure that they pass their OGT, because now OGT, or something else, but, you know, a lot of these courses also have end-of-the-year certification programs that they have to pass, and they're the same courses that you would have to pass if you were taking, you know, an adult ed class. What I always say, and I'll take Marissa as the example, is that there are two masters. There's the higher Department of Education, and what's required from that, but in the case of firefighting, we also have the Department of Public Safety, but we also have to meet their guidelines, and those are very, very strict. And so, when Marissa, at the end of this year, she will take the same firefighting one and two test that anybody at Old State or elsewhere will take. And then, as she said, she's also working on her EMT, her paramedic, and so she'll take that, that same assessment, and get her credentials before she graduates, or before she graduates high school.
I'd just like to point out, it's a lot different now than it was for JBS. My brother went to JBS, actually, I think he was in the architecture program when he had it, and he, when I told him that I was going to come to DACC, he was like, "Oh." That's, you know, it's not for more of the dad students, and my mom and I reassured him that it's changed a lot. Now, it's, you know, I mean, for my class, there's a minimum requirement, requirements of 2.0000, and there's always the previous requirement, and stuff like that, and so, yeah, it's a lot different. Students are higher class, you know, like educational or academic wise, and, you know, yeah, I, this has changed a lot.
And I think that's a tribute to all of our whole districts, is the status required for our raise gets raised for all the students, so if students come into us, there is a higher level of expectation. And I've told this to Mary Beth before, when my father-in-law called at Old Tangi, he would tell his troublemakers, "I will pass you if you go to the JBS." It is no longer like that whatsoever, and even our culinary kids, I mean, all the upper level kids worked at Muirfield, and that is an honor to those kids to be asked to work at Muirfield for the tournament every year. And the opportunities that our students get in their chosen fields is just unbelievable. When you're working every day at the zoo, and, let me tell you, they're not clinical pages, they are doing top-level research work over there at the zoo with the zookeepers there. These kids are coming out with phenomenal opportunities.
That's a really good point, because, like, with some of our programs are tied in with the state, so we also have state requirements, like, we're, for firefighting, you're only allowed to miss 10% of like school, but you have to make it up outside of school. And you have like all these different requirements from the state, and all these types of stuff that you have to pass, so it's not an easy ride to high school at all. It's an honor to actually get into some of these programs as well, because of what you're going to end up having at the end of them.
And going off of that, for my program, I'm not sure about the bridge exactly, we have an internship for the second half of the year of our senior year, so next semester, I'm going to have an internship with either Delaware County, or somewhere along those lines, and really make those connections, you know, probably as a major part of going through life, is making those connections with other people, and, you know, a lot of them are helping out other people. So that's a great kind of fit of my program.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks for spending your evening with us. Thank you. If you, I have a few things I wanted to share with you, statistics, but if my time is running, we can stop there, and I think they need to know that time. That's all because I'm proud of the program. What is the example, is Ms. Marissa wasn't on the front page, is that possible, and I would pass that around to you? taken, or you passed that around, and she knew, see that also?
Thank you. Um, I'll go through this rather quickly. As I alluded to, we've changed over the years. Back in the nineteen sixties, Pepper Road was, was the lead in wanting to get vocational education in the state of Ohio. And the purpose of that was to prepare people for the workforce. But that workforce has changed over the years, which has required all career centers to also change. When we think about who do we serve, uh, a number of years ago, back in the olden days, we would have said, oh, the kids that are going to vocational school are in this thirty-seven percent of high school degree or less. That is no longer the case. As we know, the workforce has changed. Uh, the Harvard Graduate School of Education in two thousand and eleven talked about the idea of some college, and it said, those who go to technical schools, those who get their credentials, that that is equivalent to having some college. What happens is our kids are now falling in these two sections. So the sixty-three percent of those jobs is who we're preparing for. Uh, they can go right into the workforce, they also, I'm going to leave you with a packet of information, there's some information about some alumni. Casey's in there, Casey went through our information technology program, uh, went on to get her bachelor's, and is now the coordinator of, marketing coordinator of visual communication, I believe is what it is, for back in body works. We'll skip the video, just, thank you very much, we'll skip that. Um, who do we serve? We serve the four districts in Delaware County. Uh, we also have open enrollment and contracted opportunities with Westerville and with Worthington. Uh, the other area that we're having more and more students is the School for the Deaf. When I came five years ago or four years ago, I think we had about six students, and this year we have twenty-one students from the School for the Deaf. A little bit of information about our numbers, uh, this year we have a thousand eighty-five students, um, but one of the things we're growing are our satellite opportunities and our, some of our home schools. So we have sixty-four percent of our population on north or south campus, and we have three hundred ninety-one or thirty-six percent of our population in satellites. If I look at Ole Tangi, Ole Tangi, uh, makes up eight point five percent of our population with a total of ninety-two students from Ole Tangi. If you look at our enrollment over the past several years, uh, we have gone up from just under eight hundreds. This was last year, and we're now at a thousand eighty-five. Um, what I need to say, though, is the majority of the growth has been in the satellites, and this is when we took on Big Walnut and Big, uh, and Buckeye Valley ag programs. This year we have, um, a business management program that's in partnership with Columbus State, where they're getting the college credit, and that's at Big Walnut and Delaware Hays. If I look specifically at the Ole Tangi numbers, um, a number of years ago, we offered CBI career-based intervention at the Ole Tangi campus. The last year for that would have been fiscal year oh nine. What you can see is that the blue represents the number of students that we have full day from Ole Tangi, and the red would be the number of half-day students that we have. Quickly, um, we have twenty-nine high school career tech programs, and I use the word "traditional" in quotes, to highly technical, to satellites, to emerging. The example that I always give is the auto tech, because that's the one people can get their arms around. Um, one of the things, years ago, you could go to your uncle's garage and figure out how to fix a car. Today's cars are nothing more than multiple computers. And so these kids are actually computer technicians. When they do the reading level of the auto tech book, it has a higher reading level than your senior, uh, college prep English courses. And that has to do with all the technical terms and the constant changes in the computer. So again, the day and age where that, you know, Johnny can't read very well, so send him to auto tech, think about the person that you are working on your car, and do you want them to be able to read the technical manuals and do the diagnostics? Uh, we do have the academics as we talk, and we have dual enrollment, uh, we have the traditional programs, and we saw traditional here today, but we have the zoo school, we have bioscience, we're working on developing a health informatics program, uh, we have information technology, and we alluded to also that we are also required to meet, um, not just the curriculum standards, but industry standards also. Uh, of our performance, of, over ninety percent of our alumni go on to college, serve in the military, or are employed in their area of study, and this would be the information of the last ten years. Over fifty percent of our graduates go on to higher education. We are required for our performance measures to track those kids one year out, and over fifty percent of them are enrolled in post-secondary education one year out. Over the last two years, and this is a new performance measure for us, um, over eighty percent of the students obtained their technical skill. Um, and in two thousand and eleven, this was the first year they tracked this, over seventy-nine percent of our students actually earned college credit while in their programs. That's career tech and/or academic. Again, going on, where is our future? Where are we going? We will continue to expand the business and industry partnerships that our students explained so well. We are preparing our students for college and career, and, um, looking at how do we need to teach our kids to be global? How do we need to teach them to collaborate? Um, and being prepared with the problem solving and critical thinking skills for their future. So this time, if you have any questions for me, I'll entertain these.
Do you have a, like, capacity in enrollment, or are you, in the same way as, how do you manage the application to the process?
How do we manage that? Um, it's, it's probably a longer process than what I have time to share with you tonight, but there is a certain criteria, some of our programs have different criteria coming in. Um, if I'm going to go into law enforcement, I have to make sure I have a clear background for one thing. Um, but there is a GPA requirement, a attendance requirement, looking at that whole person. At the same time, it isn't so, well, you missed next number of days, it's a matter, you've missed this, let's look in to see what's why. There might be a reason why that is the case. Um, so that is in our student services area, where they do have the enrollment process. This year we started a new program for students that didn't meet the criteria, we invited them into a program, career academic transition program, where they would not graduate on time, so we asked for a commitment of three years, and therefore they go through the program. This year we've worked with increasing, improving their academics, they're promised a spot in a program for next year's at Level One, and then the following year is the senior level, and then therefore they can graduate. It'll be a year out, but it's still positive in the graduation column. So we are doing some of those things also. But we do have capacity for more students on our north and south campus, and we welcome them. Thank you.
And I just want to point out that the students do then have time to get active after-school activities at their home schools as well, and a lot of them do.
I'll just review this information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is a hidden gem in our community, and I'd like to see more students take advantage of it. So the students that I know are involved, they're either going to college, or they've already got jobs lined up, and the job state already have, like, our jobs with benefits. You know, so it's not just, you know, it's just a job that you can get out of high school, it is a career you're getting. So if you could pass that information along, um, you know, I would appreciate it from them. Mr. King has just come up with a work that shows, he's joined us at the fifth first meeting, Mr. Orion, and I'll be checking that down, if I mean, or two, three, but I do have that site.
I revise I and B, Mr. Moore is going to report our court applications for general charges.
Hi, Paul, that's my name, we call it tonight, but I can't find anything to be all head for our true technology. I thought I'm probably not smarter than you, so. Uh, what we do have in front of you is just a breakdown of our expected impacts in the district on the current, uh, apartment complexes and townhomes that we have proposed in the district currently. Uh, before we get into that, I did want to just mention two other projects that we don't have a breakdown for, didn't break down, and that is MI Homes is doing a development of a hundred and eighty-five homes over, uh, off Half Pepper Road, uh, near Agon Lakes. And that property, similar properties are bringing in, developments are bringing in about, uh, point eight eight yield, meaning, um, not quite a student. So we would expect from that development, probably add a hundred and sixty-eight students, uh, in the general neighborhood. And that, again, is, with the housing development, that's part of what our current planning area looks out, we've got expected students based on zoning and different things there. So our yields and things that are, are, uh, enrollment going into the future takes into account the developments and some of those things that, uh, we know are going to happen, and that's what's driving our, those are our enrollment projections. The, the, one of the things that are, um, really going to impact this a little more are the apartments, uh, especially the ones like, uh, we have a hundred, five hundred and fifty coming in off Southern Road and Saddle Parkway. That currently is only commercial, so that change in zoning is, is different from what we have in our plans going forward with enrollment. So there will be some impact, um, to the district with these different, these different apartments. The first one you have is, uh, impacted by the development, uh, for village communities, uh, metro development, and that's on, uh, intersection of Route twenty-three and the Zell Road, and that currently is not zoned for apartments, and this would be in addition to the district, and we don't, we do not currently, we do not have current inter-plans. Uh, you see on the breakdown, the top section of it is, is the expected revenue, and that's taking into account, uh, the number of units, the, the expected value, and we confirm these values of the apartments and townhomes with the county audit. So the developer gave us a number of units to audit to confirm this, and it would be something that, uh, obviously they had a vested interest in being hired, and their, you know, their argument is that the, the apartments would be a revenue generator for us. In some cases, it would be, if you want to look at it that way, uh, or we have more yields. You know, the question, you never know quite what yield when you get out of these apartment complexes. Um, and then I would argue revenue generator in some regard, because we added students, which means buildings. So while the net from the tax revenue versus the cost of educating specific students may be, um, a net revenue for a year, we still, it's going to drive us costly after that buildings, which is cost of operating, ability and building, though. So that's not taken into, they, they also get some revenue generator, that's something we need to consider, it's part of the impacts of the district. With this particular, uh, growth, we have a hundred and forty-eight units, and the expected revenue, uh, from this is about two hundred and four thousand dollars, expected tax revenue. If you look down to the middle of the page to the left, what it says is a point one five yield, and I use two yields on all these analysis to be consistent. One is a point one five yield, and one is a point two five yield. We have, um, about thirteen apartment complexes in the district, and we have seven of them a point one five yield and below, and six of them are point one five yield in Buck. So it's, you're trying to get a yield that we may expect from these apartments. So using the point one five yield, uh, would generate cost to the district for our two thousand ten eleven cost per student of nine thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars would bring us an expense to the district of two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars, uh, which is excess, you know, cost of revenue of three thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. Look at the point two five yield, obviously more students, but our tax revenue may go up based on the number of students. Uh, in that case, our cost exceeds revenue, uh, of a hundred and forty-five thousand. So again, we hit the lower end of yield, you may, may see, um, those two or some revenue from it. The break even yield, this particular development is point one four, which means twenty-one students. Um, so if we get a yield of a point one four or less than, this would generate revenue. Um, the developments, looking at the yields on the southern part of the district, tend to have higher yields, and some on the road part of the district. So I think this one may be one that we would expect yield on a higher end of our yields, possibly between point one five and point two five, but again, it depends on how we market it, who they're, who they're ready to, and the GIOs, they cannot have a lot of control over, over that, but, um, that, that's the impact for that particular, uh, complex. And again, these add students to exceed each one, and I'll keep mentioning is that we may have to add load and see what we currently would expect when we add in, change zoning and adding students, we won't have towns for a current inter-planning. The second, um, page you have is the Southern Sea and Saddle Parkway, and I do have to hedge a little bit on these numbers, because we have not got the exact breakdown on townhomes, we think it's close, just what they presented, but they're also back redesigning that based on the zoning center of that, so I'd use the same breakdowns, um, as we have for the village communities for the, uh, LC community as well. So using that breakdown of, um, uh, townhomes and apartments, uh, we'd expect a tax revenue of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand. Using a point one five yield, uh, we would have expenses of, uh, additional cost to the district of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. So in this case, the, the revenue would exceed, uh, at a point one five yield, we'd exceed, um, expenses of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Again, it looks like revenue, and, and that's a year in across by the legs, so when we talk about expenses and costs, this is a year, so the tax revenue could be yearly, or the expense could be a yearly.
And Jeff, while we're talking about expenses to any district, should we need to go over there?
Correct, correct. You need to go.
What about? Yeah, Aubrey.
Yes.
And again, so the current enrollment projection would have, say, some factor in the, based on current, um, so the parcelism, commercially, you're going to see that develop commercially at some point, or something like that. But once you get that zoning switched, that's when you have challenges with the forecast is not consistent, huh?
And, and for us, in the district, this is a change, and I talked to consultants, we, we have seen, um, again, very little apartment, most of residential, and they find it. Now it's a change. So our forecasts are based on models that we've seen, you know, what we're being built by the builders, it's changed across the country in the economy, that people want it, you know, the model's just not out there, couldn't do a houses and find it, that's whether it's a loan or a purpose. We've seen more of this. So all of our models are based on what we historically have seen, and they don't want to be, you know, apartments in the addition higher, knowing when we get on a smaller, obviously it's density, where apartments push students on smaller space, that, that one, we have experience, it's not in our modeling, and two, um, change of use of the property that we would be expecting revenue to now has evidence.
And it's really sensitive to yield, right? So the change in yield, like, point one five, point two five, sounds like a small change? It's about fifty percent?
Yeah, it gave a big, big difference, and, and, and you go through all the different apartments, and then look at the yields, and, and the, we'll get next, and I'll, if we finish this and I'll jump to all the other topics, I'll talk about the yield, because I think, depending on location, that's a difference in yield as well. Um, so the break even yield, but this one's point one two. So the difference between us getting revenue from this or losing is, is, um, is there. Uh, the last one is the proposed development of the Ole Tangi School District for Gulf Village York, and that is condos that are, uh, currently selling to be yours of IT Middle School, Liberty Triometry. There are condos south, and the north, the developers in the north was in this, the proposal, that the, uh, property to the south, all of that was, um, same developer, donated land from the school, and then on each side they're building condos. So under the current zoning, this is a request for a change in zoning as well, under the current zoning, um, on that, on that northern parcel, they would put a hundred and thirty-nine condo units. Using the yield that we have currently on the condo units to the south of that property, we would expect, um, a yield of point one two. So with that yield, we, we would have a, uh, net tax spend that has zoning is today at five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So that obviously is definitely to mentor the district much more so than the others on the current level. With the proposed zoning, if you go to page two, that changes that. They go from, um, a hundred and thirty-nine condo units to, uh, three hundred and sixty-nine, some range of, um, uh, apartment units and townhomes. And the net tax revenue from that breakdown is five hundred and seventy-four thousand. Um, with a point one five yield, you see we, we have, uh, cost of five hundred and eleven thousand, so with the point one five yield, we have, uh, sixty-three thousand dollars, um, the revenue exceeds cost. If you jump up to a point two five yield, uh, cost exceed revenue by two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, so, a- as you mentioned, the yield certainly is the drivers are on the lower seat. This, this complex, with, in our discussion with the developer, what we try to share with them is, we may expect a higher yield. We only have one, one apartment complex that is right next to the elementary school, and that has a much higher yield. Um, this, these condos and apartments could be right at the, um, next to the elementary and the middle school, and across the. middle school, and across the Sommo Parkway, but the high school. So we would expect, based on one example, we have, and I don't know if that's a good example, it's a different type of apartment, it's different amenities. The village communities are arguing that they're dragging this, or they are advertising this to the late twenties, early thirties, upcoming profession. So we, you know, obviously in the school this year, we would do a question that because of location next to the schools. But again, you know, we don't know if they've got professionals that are filling up space and, you know, if they get to the point where they're not full and they need to run out, you know, I hate to start to tell everyone to line up on this, but what we've also pointed out to both zoning meetings, we've been to that Cal, with your township, is that today's economy and the location next to the school, you know, we expect apartments to have, you know, higher yields than we probably have seen in recent times. So the other thing I wanted to point out on the last page of this, of this one, is I did a breakdown, with 0.15, the other 0.25 yield, the difference in tax dollar versus current zoning versus proposed. The proposed tax on 0.15, our loss of tax revenue from, I take the $592 I mentioned earlier, last, well, we stole a gave in tax on 0.15 yield, so it's a loss of revenue to the district, we expect from current zoning of $529,000. When you go up with 0.25 yield, the total swing from the district, adding in the loss of tax revenue plus the cost of the additional students, would be $170,000 swing. The zoning change in 0.25 yield, which I think is possible to give a location next to the school.
And that was, residence or residential, is one of, isn't one of these commercial or...
The other two are both commercial or residential.
So that's, you know, more...
But they are, they are not located next to the school and, so would be used from the 0.15 yield versus what, other apartments, again, we can only get six above, 0.15, seven at 0.15 or below. So those, I think, does not have, not have a location right next to the school. I'm not sure this necessarily see a higher, a much higher yield than the proposed.
Yeah, I'll take it as a different title for the, the fact that this is developed at, at current zoning is commercial, I think John and ours are targeted here. So other complex, in essence, that yield on the table, it's just really the shift that's...
Yes, and that was a discussion we had at the Liberty Township zoning meeting. You know, they, they were debating yield. And the point I had to make is regardless of using 0.15 yield or 0.25 yield, it is in some areas 55 more students than you would add if you don't change zoning. So regardless of, you, whatever yield you want, it's still more students than we currently would get off that same piece of property under current zoning.
So you think the impact on our forecast is more dramatic, residential or residential than next to the yield areas? If you mention those, if you do a commercial or residential clip, that probably has a more significant effect. Our forecast is...
Yeah, I mean, obviously with the housing development, you've got, plus that, you've got a large number of houses, but on much larger pieces of property. So we could get, you know, more students off, smarter, and get the effect is more.
And it's beyond the operation. That's one you can have in mind, I'm not counting my buildings on one, so it's bigger than that.
Yeah, it will continue to see other developments, like Shamrock off Portside, I, you know, I don't know if that's official or they made it, I heard that needs to watch that one because it may come in that side, it may come in zoning, must be soon. And there's several other, other properties out to be developed, for housing developments. And I think, you know, we've seen these apartments take on, I think we'll see that continue to happen.
The thing I wanted to point out, the one on 23 and the one on Selverson, those seem to be in areas that we have a dense student population. So, you know, overge, those kids on the Zell, they're overge metal, you know, I would, more would assume because that's where that, that lays. So overge metals and each orange middle would be more high, you know, orange middle's been kind of high, overge metals is high. You know, on the other side, we already know, literally is high, that's high school. And elevens, I can't remember about 9.1, but Scioto is usually, is usually pretty high. So, you know, to impact in those buildings is what you also have to look at, that, you know, that's well, you know, 53 more kids, well, that's a lot of kids if your building is already pretty crowded.
And really any additional students, obviously, as we grow, we know our preference before we add students from currently planned for, then that's, you know, the sort of or additional abilities that, you know, currently have. So it's something to keep an eye on against the impact on the district, that if we grow and we take in the students we have, we, you know, we take care of them, we continue to do that, but it will have an impact, we have to keep our eye out on these forecasts moving forward. And I have continued during the zoning meetings, again, the lifestyle communities, that's an estimate based on the numbers where we picked their act, they were sent back to zoning and made some changes, so we expect that to change in terms of movements. So those numbers will fluctuate up and down as they go through the building process.
And is Deion, taking all of this and put down with on our enrollment projections?
They, they, they will not for November, working with Ralph, we just met on Wednesday and Thursday, but we're meeting on that with them and we plan to start completing those numbers, but they've been out, we won't show some, it's an opposite impact, we need to start figuring that out some more. But we will not have that from Ralph's, his enrollment projection for November. The, the future apartments will not be, you know, won't affect that at this point.
So if, if maybe when they're going through that season, if they bring that, will you bring that back to the district so that we can update the forecast accordingly? I mean, are they planning on doing it before next November?
I think it's probably next November, it's probably, because then we'll have a year of kind of seeing what things are happening, getting an idea of what, maybe we don't have a history of that. So, you know, it's, we want to be slow to figure out what is going to happen, it's going to have housing change, that, I don't know how to deliver, deliver on terms.
Why do you expect this to be built on a council or Liberty Township?
They, they haven't made it out of zoning yet, so it's, it turns out they tend to go back. I, I feel fairly good about the Liberty Township Gulf Village North. There are three things that their, that their zoning commission gave back to the developer, and one was, apparently when they zoned this originally, or built the original condos, there was a change in zoning then, a change in density. And so now they're going back to the second time, making that request, and the zoning commission is not real excited about that. The second thing they named was the impact on the schools, they did hear us, and in both, both meetings, I think, and in both Cal and Liberty Township, several community members there just spoke about the schools, it was, you know, nice to see, you know, the impact again. At some point, we will, we will take, we will educate and continue to do with our students, a lot of community members are concerned, because they're looking for the tax dollars and the, you know, the schools or the additional students. So that was the, the second thing that they mentioned. And the third is, we hope now, but now I can't think of the third was, they had three reasons for sending back.
I think we see the whole nature of Liberty Township, so obviously we have a more rural community.
Yeah, and then they mentioned with that was certainly, I think it was the, the people they sold condos to the south of Heights, expected to be moving into and able to see other condos. And so now you've sold hundreds of condos to residents of Liberty Township who are changing what they thought they had moved into. So that was another thing that they, they were not real excited about. The Pal zoning, their response really was, we want to make changes in roads and we want to keep up our infrastructure, and they're struggling with the model they currently are using to fund that. And that, you know, some of these, they fight the commercials, the car, you said before, they're fighting, the residents are fighting a lot of the development that may help with tax dollars for the community. And at some point, they've got to allow some of these things to go through to go sustain the growth of development and expansion of their infrastructure. So I think that, that Pal certainly probably will prepare similar to what it works at now. The Liberty Township Gulf Village North was cable, is that when they were prepared about no living, and the developer took the option of cable, they just come back and see different changes to the plan. And the Zell 23 has gone back and forth several times in zoning, they, that area of Arlington or Northern Columbus, its annex, has a far north zoning condition. I'm not sure that's what it's called specifically, this far north, some of the zoning, but they do everything as well as the regular zoning in, in Columbus groups. So that's, they're pretty stringent up there in the state. That's been, I think the original period for that was back in June, so that's taken quite a while to get through. But I think they're pointing out that they're starting to move forward with it.
You've got, you've got to notice how Pal, what it's, that is, you get to that, or assume whatever it is, but it's not going to be there.
Yeah. It is, it's not, I think you're right, it's not, it is a change on another condos, they want to change those, and I haven't, haven't been able to get exactly what that change is, but there's another condo, I think it's condos are changing in the use of how they go on that, I think it's apartments at this point. Pal's pretty good letting us know about some incidents of, of apartments that are pretty robust now. The other one I did want to mention that is out there, we don't have enough information on, we did good analysis, is the off of Pal Road behind the amphitheater, there's an extended stay complex. And we do get some students out of that, but I'm not sure that there's a whole lot, and we can get some, there's a similar one by Costco, we also get some students out of them, and we'll confirm that watching some bills, but that's, that's not a development that we can affect. And the property in front of, they haven't, they haven't officially said that, they said zoning, they're planning to, the Zell, the Zell 23, the front part of that, the apartments are on the back, the front part, they also plan to extend the stay there. I think that's more of a tell, extend the stay, not versus the executive, sweet extended stay.
I think also to, to, to what Jeff was saying, he's done a very, very good job inviting the developers in, and with Joe Thomas, for example. One thing that they're really pushing us for, and say pushing in a good way like that, I think this, this board has given, what are the yields in these different complexes? Because right now, they're saying they're going to work with us, give some rationale what they think the yield is. And all due respect, they don't even have to do that, they go back to the zoning commission and just say, here's what we think the yield would be. So I think what compares to Jeff, or to Jeff, is, is a board did him at least some direction, okay, we started that discussion, I think this complex could give this yield, but we had it down to a science, but Joe Thomas is going to want to be able to sit down, the zoning commission, be able to say, okay, I had this conversation with school, and we owe it a review. Where that agreement is, you know, it's kind of like hitting the target, as you can see, it's almost like a destiny there, but I know that's what they're pushing us toward.
Yeah, they would, they like to go back to zoning, say, we've sat down with schools, and we're agreeing that the yield will be X. Because again, and you see from some models, it's a lower yield, then it may generate some revenue, and they feel like they have a better chance of zoning, they can sit down and say, here's, you know, it's going to generate revenue versus the cost to the district. Now, they won't point a 5 yield originally, and we could have a 0.15 yield. So I, and I don't know that as a board, as a district, we want to support a higher yield, you know, they have a complex location, you know, we can, as administration, sit down and agree with that and provide them something to support. Obviously, not that, one of the global lines is, you know, serving, serving our, our estimates versus going to build more, build with numbers.
You should ask about, if they're going to be doing capital, it's new businesses, if they're going to have new apartments coming in, increasing our costs, they can't give out capital, this, to new businesses coming in, it puts more for them, I think that should be part of the plan, strictly this.
And that's a question for the zoning and the village, which, yeah, we need to keep having this conversation. The Sommo Parkway and Selverson is already part of the impact of that, is providing infrastructure, so they've got that in place already, and I think it's a partnership with Liberty Township as well.
And also keep in mind, they're not asking us whether we're for or against.
Right.
They're asking us, what do you think the yield would be? Do you want to at least try to work with you or make it look like you, I'm not sure what the right word is there.
No, I don't think they want to be out saying that the yield is 5, we're out saying no, the yield is 0.15, I think they want us to get to a...
Some type of compromise.
Well, or that we can say, here's our, here's our bet, this is our proof, and this is why we're saying 0.15 or 0.25 or whatever.
Here's the impact on the schooling, and these things are fair.
So we've worked with the county auditor, at least with village communities, I talked with first types of, verify the value of the flats and townhomes. So with the value, you feel like we're okay with just setting the yield?
I think the, the, obviously, they had, I think you sit down, I don't make sure that went through, and so they stop out of the minutes, but you were really fully, so you placed it on that, you mentioned with your team, you're going to rail, so you can completely fair on that. And I really appreciate you sat down with the auditor, but I think this is a very strong, I think very clear lead, and I understand.
I just think, basically, and what we're discovering about, we need to estimate the high, because in what, the situation we're in now, they can say all day they're going to market it to professionals, but someone has the opportunity to, to the district, to the president, to the current children, who get it in all the community schools, everything that's taken in, and they haven't had that opportunity before as easily as they would have now.
That's the conversation we have on the, on the board, because of the, the situation.
So I guess, you're looking for a framework from the board, I guess that would recommend there, you know, try to have one static yield, quality, that the yields become very properly impacted significantly is not possible. I think it would be helpful to engage, you know, and give some benchmarking. Mine's just, our experience is, changing the, totally, a lot of children in schools, some of the traditions have had to have similar experience, that means you kind of get a benchmark which is, and also some rationality, some kind of specific attributes that you can actually replace it, so that I'm sure it's something.
Yeah, we could give us some information from similar lifestyle communities, developments around Columbus and, and village communities as well, in addition to our yields. The other thing I want to mention is that, I think you write each one based on location and, and what their structure, like the filter, the lifestyle communities, they have a bar they put in the model there since it's here, truly younger, and they have a bar area in the property, a restaurant, a pool that's with the bar, and it's kind of really out and really is here more, so we expect a little bit of over yield on that. More apartments, a little bit of over yield, and we would expect the lifestyle next to the school and, you know...
The other caution there is that, the bar today, could be a restaurant, you know, senior system, like, who knows what that gives me from the school down the road, should that block, a lot of work, we should, should, you know. So you gotta give yourself some little room, or what the, what the attention would have on that development.
The other thing is, is as we see professionals around in school districts, raise food supply and fail others. You know, we want to be near those school districts. And so I wouldn't compare ourselves to a lifestyle community on that road, because that's growing schools. You know, yeah, you gotta compare someone that's been, you know...
Because that was another thing that was, was, that's the, lifestyle communities, they suggested a thousand fifteen of those units, and then fifteen students, based on their staff. And even residents who stood up and spoke said, I don't know, sure, I don't say, I'm not sure if I, I think you do have to look at that from a...
But I'm afraid from the worst.
Right. I like to screen.
They're just, it's based on real love. Not only the evaluation, and the data, that's what she said, that's a great start. It's, it's very, a lot of, of this.
Yeah, we have questions too, to contact Becky herself, because she's, obviously new one through this the first time, think maybe new, with the auditor and the master of, that's pretty guy, you know, but, anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
That was fast. As I promised. But in conclusion, what you're seeing here is that professional development is not, again, I think it's important for the community to understand that professional development is not just three days' worth of PD that happens. That's part of it. There's a lot more that goes into it, and it really is tied at directing our community's improvement efforts. So that CIP that was recently revised by the board, that's something that the curriculum department looks at, and we develop all of our professional development for aligning those roles. If we can't align it to the CIP, it doesn't go into OPDA.
Do they get to work on professional development every day?
Do they get to work on professional development every day? The teachers have collaborative times throughout the week that they use for ongoing professional development. That's not necessarily formal. It's not OPDA courses, which is typically done outside of the school day and evenings.
I mean, I thought they got a period two per day where they were doing professional development.
For collaboration. Which certainly ties into their professional development. When we offer district professional development, for example, we give the teachers prompts and tools that they can use in their ongoing collaboration time, which is directly related to what they're teaching and how they can improve and meet the needs of students. So we are giving them tools that they can use.
So working on their own classes at that time?
Their own instruction. Before they go, yeah, correct. Collaborative. Not their own graduate classes, if that's what you're asking, but their own student classes.
I know, yes.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to highlight about this, because that was on the board after we were transitioning over, and now the classes are all teacher-specific. And so, you know, teachers are always learning because methods change, classes are changing, and you have to keep your state requirements and everything. But, you know, sometimes if you send a teacher out to an outside speaker, it would come back, and it would be hard for them to put that to work in an open teaching classroom. So these classes allow us to, I guess, improve the culture of the community in the classes so that our district is ensured that what our teachers are learning through our professional development programs are directly going to positively impact those classroom leaders. So, you know, lack of control, and I think the teachers are better off there, too. You know, sometimes, yeah, it's great to go off site and go to, you know, a meeting off site, but it wasn't really relevant to what they were doing on a daily basis.
I have a question. I'm just ahead of the long what Julie said. I look down five things, actually. I think they've been three, five. One thing I always remember, teaching in-house means the expert is always in-house with you. How many times have we gone off to a conference and said, "What did that person say?" To get the benefit of the instructors, being right at your own site at all times, therefore we get the students into the business very quickly. Also, it allows us to guide the professional development from the teacher in advance. The more coursework they take, the more they go across the pay scale, the more we found in the student OPDA, that coursework that they are taking is just not any coursework as Julie had said when we go off to a conference, it's coursework aligned to our CIP, which makes it extremely valuable for our district. I would almost say it's customized professional development.
It's also common, as you just go through these few slides, sophistication, layering, complexity, it's involved. Every year, the academic excellence around the schools continues to grow. It's obvious that we've been known to sit still in other schools. And just a quick question, Jack, how long, I'm trying to remind you, how old are you in the district now?
That's my second floor.
Exactly. You really don't go to a hundred, hundred and eleven address. Because we have a memory, it's good.
Yes, I would say so. Thanks. You're a great job.
All right. This is Jenkins. I am the first reading of the FIDR financial forecast, and I would like to explain.
Yeah, well, we sometimes make the assumption, I'm going to have a conference next year, so that we don't have to say.
Good. Sounds good.
You sure? Okay, what we've all been waiting for, the FIDR forecast. It's exciting stuff. And actually, this year, this fall is, because it looks so much better. We lost so many people. Do you want to take a minute? Are we ready to get, I mean, we're missing a couple of word numbers in the superintendent.
I'm not hearing a couple of things, but I'm not going to.
Okay. So what I wanted to start out with was showing where we were in May of 2012, and I want you to pay particular attention to fiscal sixteen. You can see in May, and this was after we negotiated with the teachers, we were looking at an eighteen point two million dollar deficit on the end of that year. Fiscal fifteen is the year we want to look at because that's the year we're going to look at if we say that the levy's going to last four years before we request new monies. Once we've updated the FIDR forecast, if you look at sixteen, and of course it moves over because October came in at all, it's now at a negative one point seven million dollars instead of that eighteen point two. So it's a sixteen million dollar change. And what happened with that? Basically, with revenue, we do have some decrease in our real estate collections. The art things are up, and we also are not seeing the new construction that we had thought we were going to see, so we've got a more gradual increase. We have about two point four percent of new construction. We weren't seeing that, so we pulled that back, and so it's now going to gradually increase over the next five years, we think. So it is still increasing, but it's not to the rate that it was increasing. So we are still seeing some impact on our revenue negative. State foundation, I have that remaining constant. I want to caution everyone that we still don't have, and I have heard nothing about a new funding formula for fiscal fourteen, but we do know that the governor will be implementing some, introducing something early next year, and then, of course, that will work through the legislative process. Lacking any kind of information from the state, we've kept that constant. And we had no guidance, and I think I spoke to this at a previous board meeting, we had no guidance on casino revenue. If we see a payment, I think it'll be January this year, it'll be right around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars based on just kind of some of the projections we've heard, but we don't have any guidance, again, from the Ohio Department of Taxation. If the state, if the governor does not put in a place that would take money away from our foundation payment and lull up this payment, then this could become a significant revenue. But right now, we have no guidance, and my feeling is that that will be appropriated in the next funding model, and I expect that the state will at some point, some way, take away money to balance this. And I do believe that the Columbus Casino just opened, I think it was this week or last week.
So you're running from there?
So that's the third of the four casinos that are opening. We did see an increase in our TIP revenue and our income tax sharing agreement with Western though. We believe that those will continue. That was a plus for us. So the real estate reduction and the TIP and income tax sharing increase kind of balance each other out. So revenues remain very constant. You can see local versus state revenues, we still are very heavily locally funded. I don't see that changing anytime soon. The one area of state reimbursements that I have not heard anything about that are definitely a concern for us is rollback and homestead reimbursement. We receive about fifteen million dollars in that reimbursement. If that is the next state reimbursement that the legislature goes after, that could be significant for us. So it is in the risk assessment. So you can see we are still locally funded. We expect to receive about one hundred and sixty four million dollars in revenue, both state and local, but the majority of it is local, so we are locally controlled. Expenditure. All of our union contracts are now in place. We made it when office still had the two classified unions. The insurance change was really huge for us, not just in changing the level of benefits, but in working with American Mutual of Ohio, we were able to get the change to start in January, which coincides with the IRS for the HSA, their time period. And the biggest thing that happened was that they waived the premium increase that we were supposed to get in September. They just waived that. So everything takes effect in January, and they left our premiums the same. We were expecting, if you remember in May, a twenty-five percent increase in our relic, in our relic insurance premium. So to have that waived was huge, and that's where you see the most impact when you're looking at those outliers, because that premium not increasing at that rate is compounding. And we have had middle schoolers changing their scheduling. I believe it's seventh grade, sixth grade?
Seventh. Next year.
Sixth, seventh grade.
Seven. Eighth, last year, seventh, next year. Eighth grade this year, seventh grade. Go again.
They're working their way through middle school to change schedules.
Drop down to sixth grade. We'll say that. We'll hear about that.
This has an impact on the number of teachers that we have to hire for those changes. So if they're changing that scheduling, that brings up some teachers that we don't have to hire spending. So then we also have the personal benefit impact as well for them. And then, of course, additional staff, nutrition, pediatricians. We hired the same number really that we expected, but we didn't hire at the level that we expected. So that has an impact as well. This is the area that greatly impacted the forecast. So revenue remained pretty much the same expenditure to the place that we really saw huge gains this year. I've been asked by a couple of people now, could this levy last five years? I don't know that. I don't think that we will see these kinds of financial gains and reduction of our expenditures at this level again. We have a lot of things that just kind of fell into place, our commitment to the taxpayers, our partnership with all the unions, and I know that the unions definitely were listening when Dr. Lucas and I were out talking and letting them know where we were financially and what the goals of the board and the district were, and what we've been hearing from our community. I don't know that we'll make those same kind of gains. We don't negotiate with any of these unions for three more years, so time will tell. And so, could it last five years? Possibly. And I know that Ms. Beasley had asked, if we said that it went four years, what might the levy impact be if we go in four years? Right now, if you look at where everything's going and everything remains the same, we're still looking at about a ten mil levy in four years. And that's no loss of revenue and our expenditures stayed at the way they are. And we do know that we're doing working on some additional scheduling changes. We're trying to do the agreement with all the states, so there will be some impact to these, to the expenditures. I don't know what levy we can get it down to. It really depends on what are we, what are we doing with our programs and can we sustain what we're offering. And it's four years after, so it's kind of difficult to even come up with that number. That's just, I'm not saying I'm recommending a ten mil levy, I'm just saying at this point, that's at least probably.
How would you size the gap? So if I take the forecast and what do I have to believe to get five? What size that gap?
Yeah, if we get back to this. What we need is for fiscal sixteen to look like fiscal fifteen. So we need to get fiscal sixteen to be at least a positive fifteen to nineteen million dollars before we go back on the ballot again. So over the next four years, you're going to have to make changes that substantially impact to get to that thing, and they have to be compelling. They can't be one time.
Could we actually reduce some scenario around take rates from the HSA and insurance agencies there as well as different commercial and residential market assumptions? Because there you look at that, there potential leverage for opportunity, those are the two areas that.
Absolutely. What we looked at is that in the, the difference between someone taking the HSA versus the NSPPO, if about ten people, ten family members take the high deductible, it's about an eighteen thousand dollar benefit to the district in reduced costs. So we can, and we don't know what that is, that was another question Ms. Beasley had asked. The period for them to choose is November. We have some forms coming in, but I don't expect to get those, start getting those until probably early November. We've had informational meetings throughout the district, and we've had about thirty of them. We have about, I think it's four more, three or four left to do. We've had great attendance. Obviously, not everybody has come, and, you know, if I go to a meeting, then I'm an expert, so I can tell you about it, which makes me a little nervous, because we don't always hear the same thing at the meeting. But we've had a ton of information, and we have someone from the bank there with the HSA information, and it's always encouraging to see the number of people that come up to get the HSA packet. Now whether or not they fill that out, and that's the choice that they make, time will tell. In the forecast, we don't, we didn't assume a huge number of people would take the high deductible plan because it's so new and people are afraid of it. And then we factor in the change in the premium, but we didn't have that premium increase for those few months. It all works out. So any, anytime we can get anyone to, we will go into that high deductible, that's going to be a plus for us. One thing that we definitely, definitely need to look at in the future is perhaps somehow incentivizing people a little more to take that high deductible. The board is putting a one-time deposit into the HSA for them, six hundred or twelve hundred, but I think we tie it to wellness so that, you know, if you do the BMI screen, you get X number of dollars toward that high deductible, which would incentivize them. But I don't want to have happen on, he says, "Okay, I'm going to take the high deductible this year because I'm getting that money, and then next year I will switch to the NSPPO." Although, to be honest, when I sit for meetings, the NSPPO is, can be just as costly, not more so than the high deductible. And I think as more people see that, because even though on the NSPPO, you're limited to a fifteen hundred dollar out-of-pocket max, you still have the doctor visit co-pays that are now higher, you still have the prescription drug co-pays that are higher, et cetera. So if you have a lot of those items, it's going to be every bit as expensive now and more so.
Yeah, you can get the same cash flow that you're about to save.
Yeah.
So I would still like to see, should we assume it turns to the, is it a bit better for us, so we can really understand the sensitivity?
This just shows the difference, the drop that we saw in our benefits, where it was heading and where it is now. The drop obviously is just the changes in insurance and not getting that premium increase. It was huge for us. These are our drivers. You can see this, the top row is not typical for us. It's the same number of buildings, all five years of the forecast, and we know new buildings modeled in this. This is a risk. We do realize that we're crowded at Liberty High School, which is why the district board needs to start talking about capacity and that, you know, maybe sixteen hundred, sixteen fifty isn't really the right capacity for the high school, that it needs to be higher than that, because we can actually use the classrooms a little differently. But that would be a risk. If that does not change, then we should actually already be building high school number four, which we have not told or led before. And then, of course, we have elementary sixteen, that's further out in the forecast, and then middle school number six, that is not in this forecast. And enrollment continues to grow. These are the latest, or the estimates that we have from last November. We won't have the updated ones until next month. We always get those late. If there is a significant change, we'll update the forecast and bring them back to you. I don't expect significant changes, but I'm not sure. And then also, as you heard just a little bit ago, department complexes could cause up an issue, but it doesn't sound like we're going to know that until next November.
At the development committee meeting last Wednesday, we looked at projections as of former works, and we were just sixty-four students off, sixty-four students under projection, which to me, that's a lot, because we know we always get students that come in in the fourth grade. So those numbers have been feeling right on. Now, there's been some fluctuation in the grade level, you know, but as a whole, we're going to be sixty-four students.
So the district, for several years, and I started at the finance committee level, was encouraging the district to look at increase in the teacher ratio. I want to remind everyone, this is not classroom teacher ratio. This is pupil teacher ratio, so includes all of the specialists, librarians, phys ed, et cetera. And it is rising, and we expect it to continue. But I also wanted to show you, and I only go back and go to fourteen because I went back to the October two thousand and ten forecast to see where we were projecting pupil teacher ratio, and you can see there's quite a significant difference. Now, that doesn't just happen because we changed the number. It happens because we're changing the number of students in the classroom. So you will see, especially third, fourth, fifth, et cetera, those class sizes are growing. Now, we do have a contractual limit at the grade level, so twenty-four to one is the elementary, twenty-five to one is middle school, high school. So we can't go over those, but we're very close to that. So you will see some elementary classes that have twenty-seven, twenty-eight students in the class. So we expect to spend about one hundred and fifty-seven million dollars and cannot have the number listed, which is actually under what the budget was at the board approved in June. We'll reduce some of those based on, you know, new information, so that's lower, so the budget will be lower. Risk assessment, obviously, high school number four is not in this, and there's, if you look at the notes, there are action pages of risk assessments, but these are some of the most important points. Stating is probably the biggest risk I see to the forecast, because our real estate values are pretty much dead. New construction does not have a huge impact on the district at this point, and this is the only piece of the revenue pie that we don't know. And that will include not just foundation, but also, as I said, whether or not rollback and homestead is affected as well. John Peter autism scholarship, we do have, I believe it was eleven students the last time we checked, people services that are taking advantage of this at different levels. We'll need to watch that. It is capped at state level, so, but Chris Anders in community services is really watching that, keeping us up to date on it. And then the casino revenue.
I think that, I read yesterday that casino revenue per pupil across the state is projected at eighteen point two dollars per student, if all of the projections work out. So it's, ooh, yeah, extra eighteen dollars per student. Well, it works like it did in California, though, exactly. So just take it out of state money.
Right. That's what they did with lottery money. I hope you remember, how many years ago lottery money saved the district. So I expect that to be the same thing. We might see a bump in this year because there's nothing in the law that takes that away yet. So we may see three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, come in January, but then in August of next year, when the next payment is supposed to come, and that is, that one should be more, is there really an almost seventy-one dollars per student where it can become a little more significant? Question's about one point two million dollars in revenue for us. That's when your new funding plan is going to be in place. So that's the reason we didn't put it in the forecast. We may get that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year in this fiscal year, but I just don't expect it to continue, so if it does, that would be a plus for us. So the forecast does project, at this point, all things staying equal, that we will make forty years before we need to ask the residents for any new monies. Obviously, we're going to continue to find efficiencies and continue what we've been doing, but hopefully, I'd like to make it last six or seven years, because then I would be tired then, or is what it looks like right now. Any questions? I do have, I've asked Mr. Tracy, our finance committee chair, to want to speak about the finance committee met up on September seventeenth to review the FIDR forecast and the assumptions. I'd ask him to help them. He would report, that'll be great.
Thank you very much. The answer to your question on the amount of savings for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen is two point four million dollars. So from your main forecast now, two point four million in savings. That's okay. I'm Michael Tracy. I'm chairman of the finance audit committee. Our committee did need, on September seventeenth, to review the forecast update for October. I don't have a power of influence, but I should agree. Becky Jenkins, treasurer, Todd Johnson, assistant treasurer, provides the committee with details of the forecast update, including analysis of the changes since the last forecast. Becky was kind enough to provide a summary of the outcomes of the latest union negotiations and how they impacted the update, which is significant, and I congratulate you all on that. Todd reviewed the details of the assumptions used to prepare the forecast, and the committee discussed various points for clarification. And as the chairman of the committee, I can report that the committee believes that the October two thousand and twelve forecast update, as well as the assumptions used in the forecast, are reasonable. Committee also believes that the risk assessments included with the forecast, while not required for the report, add significant value to the reading, to the reader, to understand how the forecast could change in the future as the financial landscape of elementary schools changes. With that, I'll take any questions?
Of course, the team agreed, I appreciate very much the input. I had two members of the committee impacting the day after, and they both spoke to help good that we were in color for myself.
It wasn't, it was covered.
And we were able to go to that meeting, that was a portion of our, you were speaking with yourself.
No.
So it was a five, I thought it was, really long time, but I can be right down, in the, in the dialogue, or, or whatever. Okay. Thank you. Your patience.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to go ahead?
No.
And I am the P, this is our representative first reading of the policy update.
As usual, I sent quite a few draft policies for everybody to read, so I don't want to overwhelm anybody, but this is the last grouping within the Yoles. You'll be clapping anytime. Last two look over these drafts. No, they're not. We have quite a few in this grouping with the seven thousands, seven thousands of properties, but I will start with the miscellaneous draft policies and kind of walk through those first. And as you can see, we have sixteen policies that require the deletion of the DMA, which is a declaration of guardian material assistance to terrorist organizations. That language was repealed in House Bill forty-seven on September seventeen. So every policy that we currently have in the Yoles needs to have that language eliminated. So I listed the sixteen policies that we all suggest that we eliminate, and that's the reference as to why they are being asked to review for you, for that DMA language to be simply removed from each of those policies. Also, in the miscellaneous, I have two bullying-related policies. The first one is the bullying and other forms of aggression, and that is updated language referring to the Jessica Vogon Act and referencing bullying on, like, assault and transportation type of situations. And then the other bullying policy is the Title VI anti-garaslement, and that is an Office of Civil Rights compliance piece that I'm assuming to need to review, which, of course, Title VI is race, color, and national origin. The last grouping in those miscellaneous are all transportation policies, and as you can recall, and I presented the thousands before, we held the eighty-six hundreds because at that time we were having a new transportation director stepping on board, and I wanted her with her new team to review those eighty-six hundreds. So we have quite a few transportation policy pieces that I wanted you to make sure that you take a look at. And we do have one at the very bottom, the transportation of students by private vehicle. I did have policy, committee members asked about that. We do have private services, we do transport, so we do need to have language that references that. So that's our very last eighty-six sixty that I wanted to point out. Jumping to the seven thousands, the seven thousands, as I mentioned earlier, are facilities, and there's quite a few of those that I want you to consider and take a look at. The first, the first you talk about facilities planning and development, they talk about site acquisition, they talk about property and disposing of property. The next few talk about security, buildings and grounds, they talk about video surveillance, and I'll jump back to that one in a few. a few of those that I want you to consider and take a look at. The first, the first you talk about facilities planning and development, they talk about site acquisition, they talk about property and disposing of property. The next few talk about security, buildings and grounds, they talk about video surveillance, and I'll jump back to that one in a few minutes. And then we move on to the use of the facilities and conduct on those properties. And then the last grouping of the 7,000s are all of the remaining technology policies that we needed to have updated, and I'd ask Keith and his technology team to review those policies for us. So before I conclude, the video surveillance and electronic monitoring, that's a policy that the committee has looked at, talked with transportation, and talked with Keith Pomray and Jeff Gordon about that. That's one that we made, one of the business language and take a look, that has a lot of fiscal attachment to that policy that he's very late on at.
Yes, it's going to cost a lot more. So if you approve it, you're approving the expenditure of one...
And so that's...
I don't know how much yet. How's this an upgrade?
It's an upgrade. It's looking at upgrading of our surveillance equipment and possibly replacing quite a bit of surveillance equipment. So what I would probably recommend is that you ask the policy committee to maybe put in some language that allows you to continually upgrade that type of equipment, rather than slap it in the face with a one-time, huge expense.
And just as an example, the first time we looked at the new policy was transportation, so surveillance in buses. Right now, we are not recording for seventh grade level on a bird. To upgrade that equipment, we have, I believe it's 42 buses that have the input necessary when you to upgrade the other 100 buses at about a couple hundred dollars per bus. So you're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars there. I don't know what the cost will be for the buildings, because we're running another area of surveillance. So this could be significant, and so what I would like to have the policy committee look at is how can we fiscally replace the duty of management, replace that DVR as we're replacing bus schedule. What are the easiest avenues to replace the surveillance funding, all of the 100 remaining, but we don't have 90 buses this year. So what happens to the 10 buses or 9 buses that were getting rid of? We think it would pack out and reduce that 200,000. So I would like to see me to work that, and then, of course, I don't know when I'm going to...
Well, I would imagine it would be costly quite as well, so probably you would ask for us to do a review of that periodically, incorporate that perhaps in the capital improvement projects, that we annually review those and continue to upgrade as necessary and as the district can finance this way.
Without Jeffrey Adams doing this?
Correct.
Well, I'd say what I would do is do that analysis, how is the cost implications, and how would it affect the rest of the capital?
In a specific, that you put through the capital improvement process...
Correct.
... verify the rest of the capital.
And I would, I would try and incorporate that type of language in the policy so that you would always have that assurance that it would build that process, so that it doesn't get lost year for year.
Just as a function of that conversation, when that never went down off, that whole conversation about code, 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 and code is very critical, and that's completely what we're trying, on the whole, putting this forward, something, what a... Maybe we'll have that one, if we need some, for the conversation for this year. Over to a particular section now, let's start calling for questions.
Questions?
On the 7,41, deletions in school, there's the third paragraph in the bottom, the last sentence. So the given, the term of the board, the provision of costs of results, the set, is given, the fourth major part, the cost allocation and operation, things present as necessary, that you change the shell, that we have to secure the funds, or have them allocated the size that we will, that we have the money for the costs that we associate with this issue.
I think we have consensus, or consensus that you...
Yeah, sounds... I would feel so often, you know, the other...
Well, like, for this one, I'm thinking of the outdoor, the classrooms, I think, you know, like, some of our outdoor classrooms where there's a covered patio area, we can have glass outdoors, we'd never ask for any, one, 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 or two building. There's one, I think, because one of the students died in a car accident, so it's going to be a burden of money, you know, to do that. We've never...
Well, there's certainly the major parts, you can ask the allocate, you provide to... I think if we had to pay here, just by the company domain, we could also ask policies from the government to ensure, oh, I can't, I can go, hold you second, just absolutely, consensus is obvious, they wouldn't have touched. I mean, I'm not, right here, I'm not talking about paying up the total provision of money to pay it, I mean, the funds we allocate, whether it's from our own, you know, general fund or wherever, just so that we have it secured, actually, that we have the funds to maintain.
Is I, the main one, is sufficient, if you pass the word you need, you made that decision?
Yeah. And that's exactly how policies are going to be, numerous factors, that angle, that challenge, and it's always an offensive.
And I would add, and Jeff, there's a lot of things about capital convergence, that would be part of that budget, and so it's a reality that that's coming, that wouldn't be allocated like you're asking at the time of the donation. And it was also discussed that the Development Committee needed that any new projects such as these, you know, whether it be with group, whatever, became through the Development Committees, but they can look at things like that, you know, like the little, like the restroom room, they came up with, okay, it's going to cost X amount of dollars to turn around lights. And so that, that process, I believe, is in place, and will be thoroughly discussed at the Development Committee, based on the numbers of 10.
Other questions? On the cell phones, I think Julie asked, is there any, how many people have cell phones? 60? What, what's the approximate cost?
Jeff, I'm going to defer to Jeff.
Yeah, we have 60, 60 push-to-talk next health, I'm not saying this is a stupid, we have 60 push-to-talk next health and three smartphones, and the approximate cost for two of the smartphones, about $55, one 65, came on later, so we can get the same plan. The average cost for the other next desk with a plan of minutes that we add subtract phones to, it's about $28, I'm working that, you know.
Is, in today's day and age, is that necessary, though? I mean, because now, cell phones are going to data plans, and even though my company doesn't pay me anything, I know that if my boss needs to get home, he's going to call me on my cellphone, you know. So it's the same way if I'm doing work on my iPad, you know, doing work, work on my iPad, it's my iPad, I'm not being reimbursed for it, it's kind of like an expectation, you know, so I'm wondering, if in today's day and age, because of how the planes are going to data plans now, and you're not, if you're not charged a permit, if that's any necessary, Kevin and I...
Yeah, I agree with you, I would, particularly for you, this policy encourages the district and the Tracys to consider more personally owned devices, that they're allowed for access to district technology, through a secure application, like for a classroom unit, and to separate their business use of a personal device, that we would consider, you know, stipate the cost for simplicity, transitioning to more of a personal structure, where you can version for business activity versus this, all of those pages, these are possible. If you use it for personal, or how do you keep separate for a social business, you can cleanse a lot of that by just having, you know, your personal device, that is a small placement for the two years, it simplifies it in practice, and it's really fantastic.
And any more testing is free.
The one thing I have with, with cell phones, and I think your view is more on administrative side, the majority of our cell phones are actually maintenance, and we've got to push to talk, and you move it back toward that way, and like calling vendors, your person, that type of thing.
Only one question is how critical are those push-to-talks? Or is this just a testing of this guy?
Yeah, with those, with those, with those individuals, they're not, that's not one that we necessarily, we may necessarily have cell phone command, but, you know, I, again, I'm just granted, we're there, we do those separate from the administrative side. The administrative side, because it's an avenue, it's pretty expensive, we consider maybe, I'm not sure what their plan would be, we need to make sure that they have a cell phone, in many cases, to call, and not all of them have a cell phone.
There's also, from the HR perspective, if they're hourly employees, much different goes around whether or not you can use your own phone, because if you're using your own phone and then you use it for a business thing, you're paid for that hour, and there's rules like that on whether or not it's supplied, and that's it, that's something I want to make sure, you know, come in then, and then SPH draft laws, and so there's a lot of difference from an hourly employee as opposed to someone like you or I in our company, and we've got an application on our personal phone, they don't even get a stipend, we're using our personal phones, but they wouldn't give those, they don't allow that application for hourly employees, because we should start using it, it's only on the block, even if it's not popular. So as we look into that, I'm sure they'll, you know, be involved from a legal standpoint, because there's a lot used by hourly employees.
Also, please, if we were trying to prescribe a policy, rather we would ask them to go back, sit on a few minutes, that would be more...
Or maybe there's one rule that I would work on, another rule for...
Well, with the press, we have boredom, you can pick that up, you know, probably have figured it out today.
Yeah, it's all kind of those, that, that we can track, and we know that it is...
Other questions? Would you want to touch on what we certainly have starting off, the third way, about the 7,250, 1,000, 1,000, is it going to be?
A lot of 100,000.
Yes, yes, yes. 7,250, 1,000, what do you think that, however?
This is one that the Policy Committee spent quite a amount of time talking about, and the temporary school facilities is something that we're hoping that the Board considers seriously as a draft policy for approval, because we realize that we, we are coming out of a mode of building, building, building. However, we have enrollment numbers that are still going up, 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 and so we are wanting to put some flexibility into the district and the system of operations, rather than always looking at our first alternative of building, of building, that we look at other options, which I'm sure we have in the past, but this, this kind of solidifies it, puts it in the language, and I think, I think C is the critical statement in this policy, that we will, that the Board will use as alternative organizational plans may be, may be considered, and that maximizes efficiency and potentially allows for greater flexibility with use of facilities, i.e. scheduling, doing enrollment, open lunches. Those, those are things that are referenced as an organizational plan, that we always examine all the alternatives before turning to taxpayers and saying, we need X number of dollars. So the Policy Committee felt very strongly about this language, and we hope we consider it as well.
Our end is starting with that one, because one of my questions is, does it cover things like if Liberty has 2,200 students, and you say that's the capacity, and we do something organizationally different there, and it doesn't matter that Orange is only going to have 16? I mean, I think there's a longstanding, all the schools have to remain the same size?
And then that's a...
Do you feel that that's covered in C as an organizational change?
Well, I'll tell you what, the committee did not want to commit to a number. They really felt that a number is not sufficient anymore, that you don't look at a number per building, you look at services provided by that building, and can you efficiently and appropriately meet the needs of students within a facility, not X number of students? And so you really want to stay away with the number, so they thought the phrase organizational plan best suited the need. So you could have a building, and you do currently, you have an elementary that has larger number than maybe another elementary.
Well, maybe, maybe the change then that I would recommend, because this sounds like it's talking about the internal use of one facility, maybe say flexibility in the use of the facilities. I know it seems like it's a whole change, but when I first read this, it, it sounded like you were talking about making changes within one building to satisfy that building, and I'm, I'm thinking broader, around the organization of how we interact with somebody.
The quote is correct. The key to this is, is beyond thinking about 600, 900, 100, 1100.
Yeah, great. I'll mark that as, as well, on, you know, I'm saying, that's one of the things we'll consider back in 4,151, you know, the pre- determined building capacity, you know, that's just one of the things we need to make sure it's listed in there, and it's something that we talk about every year, instead of saying, this is, since it's built, that's what the number was, and it's what it's today's.
And we spoke about all of this, and you were, you know, so, 69, 60.
And then the last one that I wanted to point out, just very quickly, is the very last, 7,000, 7,550, joint facility, about that was somewhat unique language that allows us to consider joining services with, for example, Columbus State, and so this is a little bit of the flexibility concept on that very last one. And that's it.
Any other questions?
You're very welcome. I thought I could give you all again.
Oh, maybe I have a question.
Assistant Chair, I'm going to the board, immediately, as you gave it to me, it's concerned about the use of the media, but it should be probably assumed practically.
People strike the board, with migration being struck immediately?
I would say...
As soon as I...
Yeah.
It's a bit of a necessity, isn't it?
Yes.
The right story later, wrong story early.
My, 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 that is a good, that is a good, the way you can back my source of proof is very effective, because, you know, you can contact me, and you can be up to, for that, to check the story out, because sometimes, as you say, it does take time to really sift through all of the rumors, facts, whatever they may be, you can get back to this stuff. I would appreciate that. And just swing out of the...
Are you...
I'm going to show you my...
What's the policy number?
It is 7,400, $1,000, we see.
Thank you.
Assistant Board, do you like to give us a balance, like, I got 17,000, 1,000, that thing? I guess a question, why couldn't we, as a videotaped classroom, if we use that as a coaching app for teachers? So, my performing, watching film on Monday, you could make, instruct them to focus based on sitting down and watching from here, why couldn't we do that as teaching?
I thought that that was different than the surveillance.
So did I. I consider that to be an instructional, professional development model, in the surveillance model.
In the, in the new teacher evaluation, that's one of those things that they are recommending, already to evacuate the teacher.
So, so this would prohibit you from using video...
Or instructional purposes.
Right. Correct. Because the, I think we're talking about surveillance video versus a, I'm going to put it in paper class tonight, because we're evaluating.
come in and take your class, because we're evaluating. Right. I have one on, and it's, I had probably a minute, but I just want to make sure it's clear. Page twenty-six of one fifty-one, on the use of tobacco on school premises. That's a hard one to, I'm sorry, that's a hard one to cover. Well, yeah, right, that's part of it, but part of my concern was, and I don't know enough about it, since I probably have never had a smoke, but if someone's on the patch or something, you know, I don't know if that's counted as a tobacco competing thing. I'd hate for some sort of medical.
Yeah, I think that's a medical.
I just want to, because it kind of made it sound like nothing that derives the effects of tobacco, to me, you know, kind of was like, well, that's exactly people that are trying to quit smoking. I just want to make sure nothing we say here interferes with the idea that someone is trying to quit and this patch on or something is somehow breaking the tobacco law. I know that seems silly, but there will be people that will. And they might not even know that. And another one, it's not really a policy thing, but it's more of a, once I get page thirty-nine of one fifty-one, the conservation of natural materiality versus that with love sometime in the next couple of months to get an idea of what our recycling levels are and our recycling plan, and can we get a report on what our current efforts are, and there's all kinds of opportunities to track, you know, how long would it take to go landfill-free? Jeff knows what I'm talking about. He's trying to.
I see you.
He's actually taking those.
But a little bit of the energy, I know that the energy thing, but just what are we doing now, and, you know, I can kind of see what's happening at the high school level with the bins we have, and I'm just curious what, one of the reasons I'm asking is, I had the misfortune to be there when we separate recycling at my company, and when the trash portion came, I thought I'd dump them all into the same thing, and so that's the kind of thing that I'd like to know is not happening, and what are we doing? So if we could get a report on that, I'd be very interested in that. I don't want anyone else to worry about it.
And Jeff is looking at this on the end of your side. I knew we were.
Seventy-five fifty, ninety-one of one fifty-one. The choices of the students, they strike me off on the exam or the government, it doesn't include the policy for any consideration.
It's so really dirty, with things like, used to list all of the media, address, and it's like all this stuff.
Right.
So.
So a hundred of one fifty-one. What was the rest of that? It's one, two, three, four, five, eight, or, okay, so the total will now be set for the current four members. I think we can tie that back to your weight period, we, we have a lot of that.
Yeah. Page one forty-three of one fifty-one, district vehicle engine idling restrictions. It's almost like it's designed around just when they're in school loading zone. You know, I got involved when I got a sophomore parent who said it was sitting in a parking lot in Worthington at a restaurant waiting, and I was doing that thing, and ran for twenty-five minutes. Could there be more, I don't know, if there could be more friends to say, should not be idling anywhere, but it says technically now, it's a wooden dome, and, but it shouldn't have been.
Jimmy.
So I don't know if there's a way to be more vague about where they shouldn't be idling.
She's referencing six fourteen.
That one, we talked about, we want to.
That they carry their own school loading zone.
Yes, we did have a good time with that.
Yeah, I just, you know, it's a pretty restrictive saying, just loading sometimes would just say ten minutes, five minutes, but I don't know if they're ever idling waiting for kids behind the lost motor. So I just would like that to be less specific to just looking at.
Do you have a comment on that, Jeff?
Oh, but I think the federal law speaks to the, you know, loading, I love specific.
I'll check the OAC, the administrative guidelines, because that came directly out of that language, so I'll see if it does restrict us or not, but it gives us a little bit of guidance for me.
Yeah, just like you, I don't want.
I know that was in a.
Ten minutes, five minutes, I'm trying to change them to be.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great job with the committee. And Roger Lewis, now, why I am, you want out of here at eight, right?
Yes.
Okay. It's like, it's like, I don't know, I can't read. Actually, this is very important stuff, because that is related to the entire, so the things that rule and rule and organization changes. This is a switching of our visits from Dr. Harrison, from the state, which you can see as a host. I take it that everyone has read the twenty-page compact report, and I won't go over that specifically, because some all read, and they all read the Dr. Harrison report. Here is a part of the issue, as a regional group, this joint resolution, this regional group, the life for college, university, government boards, K-12 school districts that you're going to, basically comes down to a regional plan that, one, gets our kids at K-12 level, our college level, and to university level, probably most important is to create a highly skilled and adaptive workforce. And of course, that's the ultimate goal for all of us. Unfortunately, at K-12 level, we know specifically what it's changing, for most of our preparing kids for that mixed level, what we call, whether it be community college level or college university level. But it is, it is a, it is a plan, it is a resolution, it is a compact that we say basically we support, and the whole wording of this compact, of course, I think you realize the, we're all going to have sixty percent of our population in the central Ohio region at a visa associate's degree by twenty twenty-five. I think you also know this, Delaware County already has sixty percent. I think you also know this, all this tangy district, we are at about sixty-six percent of our constituents. So we are well ahead of the curve, and of course, I think that this compact, this group is looking at us as, we need to be this great. Now, Julie asked me a question, who assigned this compact? Nonesburg signed the compact, DSC of Central Ohio has signed the compact. I believe you heard Dr. Harrison say, they would like everyone to be on board by November thirteenth. I would like to bring this back at the October business meeting, and basically approve this resolution, which states that we are part of this group, we are part of this compact. What's in it for us, would be specifically being on page three or four, you know, that overall role piece where it says shared services in the fourth building. But we have been leaders in this charge the entire way, and we continue, we continue to be leaders, because we are somewhat framing the workforce of the future, and I know that that would be, we would be a vital piece of this compact. Questions? I think this is something where I assume this is about, you go to the twenty-five minute, and, 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 and.
I need to be clear, by joining the compact, they're not, they're usually all the, those that all the, this is more of a.
Medical, yes.
Maybe I'm just tired, and I just don't remember, but the twenty-page document, if you can help, I'm sure we got, I'm sure I read it. Can you remind me where I found it?
Yes.
It's not in. Okay. Oh, then I will read it. I read your last date, I didn't know there was a tension. I often read that on my.
Yes, it's in twenty.
I feel, I feel a little, I feel a little remorse now, I'm not sure if you read your book.
It's actually, it was good reading. It is interesting.
Can I express that?
Please, it's not like we're reading the twenty pages.
As we progress through, like, fourteen, it's all the way up to nine hours. It'd be interesting to see, have compact goals, we set our own goals, a lot of compact goals are achieving, so I don't want to, versus.
That's what I'm afraid, George.
Achieving ours, but that's a, yeah.
I think the piece of that is, this, we need to incorporate this, we're saying that this is vitally important to us, it needs to be part of our annual report. That's one of those pieces, okay? We're at sixty percent. We need to go higher, because we need to pull this up, because as you see in the report, others are in thirty-five, forty percent, they have a long way to go. I think another thing that, that contains eleven, I have to point out, and talks about Central Ohio's assets, successful urgent work in K-12 school districts, we have, the new DSC has twenty-six school districts, as part of, we have some highly successful ones, in fact, all the tangy right now, thirty-five out of six fourteen, and the new numbers are coming out, I believe I saw on the day, October seventeenth. So we know we did very well, hopefully that pushes us, us, subject further. But we are a true investment asset, and as you, we're already noticed also, in Ohio State, Columbus State, all the tangy, but Ohio State, Columbus State looks to us to form almost a separate compact, because we literally work hand-in-hand with Nonesburg, in all due respect, our program, Nonesburg program, looks totally different. Absolutely. And we're really moving forward, and we're also at this, the facility that we were in, we're talking about facilities, building the moment, and how that all ties into the body of the case, this is also a valuable asset that we need to view as part of us, part of ours, because I think very, very soon, it's going to be a seamless transition from K-12 to higher ed, career centers, it's all going to be, you know, almost, which always is basically now, the shared service to the key, it is all tax supported, it's almost supported.
So I like the compact, because I like the, a lot of the output, I'm sure, the management trust for the.
Yes. I just heard, I mean, unfortunately, we, we, yes. Any other questions, Marshall, Thomas? This will be the October business meeting, October resolution, as we follow. And we will, this was very glad to be live, and appreciate everyone's time, and listening to you now. Second, please.
Second. Mr. Warren. Mr. White.
Yes. Yes. Thank you, everybody.